Good morning. It's July 9th and I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Clicktack County Commissioners with all three Commissioners present. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Is there anything to either of my seatmates like to add to the agenda?
I don't know.
It's probably, I thought we'd had the smallest agenda a couple of weeks ago and I've never seen one like this.
It got smaller.
And it got smaller. Okay, Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda noting that the executive session has been canceled.
I will second the motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So we'll open up public comment. If you're in the room and like to speak, raise your hand and come to the front. Mr. Irigg and online, the same one we call on you, be sure to identify yourself if you can for us. Good morning.
Good morning. Ron Irigg Goldendale. Two items. One, I want to compliment the Commissioners as well as Public Works for the ADA. Work done on the grandstands with the wheelchair ramp and the handrails was used quite a bit at the demolition derby. There was at least a couple of people using that. So thank you for your time and for doing that.
That's good.
The second item is the fairgrounds having a discussion on when to dedicate the new duly building. And we're talking at this time, August 14th in the evening. We'd like to invite all three Commissioners to that dedication and we'll get back to you when we get closer to that.
Fourteenth, tenth?
Yes, I believe that's Wednesday.
Okay. Yeah.
We're talking about doing it on a Thursday, you know, maybe before the dinner, but they're talking maybe Wednesday would be better. So we'd like to invite all three of the Commissioners to the dedication.
Thank you.
So anyhow, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Stay cool.
Well.
Yeah. Good morning, online. Is there anybody who'd like to give comment this morning? Bob Yosel. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. I just wanted to thank all the Commissioners for their dedication and hard work. I went to the recent town hall meeting in Dallesport by the sheriff and I was a little concerned with some of the vitriol that was expressed there. And I just want to say that your job is not to be popular. Your job is to make good decisions based on facts and what is best for the community as a whole. And I think in general, all of you have done that. So I just want to express my heartfelt support for taking those hard stands and often unpopular positions that truly represent the interest of the county and the citizens at large and not a small but vocal minority of people. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Back in the room? Anybody? So online, is there anyone else on Zoom this morning?
Seven two one one.
Seven two one one.
Greg Wagner sees. On June 25th, Public Works Director Mr. Hunter stated Avengrid will repower 52 Juniper Canyon wind turbines and stated the cost would exceed $200 million. In reality, Avengrid is repowering 62 wind turbines. He also stated Avengrid will be billed $150,000 for the road hall agreement thanks to Title 12 road standards. I reviewed Title 12 road standards and Section 3.10 makes no reference to billing $150,000 for road hall agreements. On July 2nd, I asked Mr. Hunter, how did you arrive at $200 million? He stated, it's just an estimate. He stated, June 25th, the repower will exceed $200 million. He didn't say it was an estimate. I then asked him, how did you arrive at a billing of $150,000 for the Avengrid road hall agreement? Since nowhere in Title 12, our Clicktack County 2.72 doesn't state a road hall agreement will be billed $150,000. He said, you know, we have to hire a consultant and we got a grant to cover that entire amount. I want to know why is Mr. Hunter applying for a grant to cover Avengrid's road hall agreement cost? Mr. Hunter should hire the consultant and bill Avengrid per Title 12, Section 2.12 and Clicktack County Code 2.72, the fee schedule. Avengrid should pay all the costs upfront, the same as any citizen and pay before any road hall agreement permit is issued. During the permitting process of Lund Hill Solar Mochi, Lynn Blad, the planning director, permitted the project to perform. Many of the conditions of approval were met, some as late as 15 months, and that included the road hall agreement. Was Avengrid Lund Hill Solar Project billed $150,000 for their road hall agreement? I want to know if Mr. Hunter received a grant to cover Avengrid's road hall fees. Clicktack County Code 12 and the franchise agreement clearly states the county engineer is the person to oversee and ensure the state laws, county codes, and requirements are adhered to. Why isn't Mr. Scorola performing these duties as the director instead of Mr. Hunter? The previous county engineer was Mr. Gordon Kelsey and he was a licensed engineer. He oversaw Public Works and made the report, weekly reports to the board. Why hasn't the current county engineer, Mr. Scorola, been promoted to Public Works Director? He is the certified and licensed county engineer. The county comp plan, the EOZ, nor the MDP, the Model D decommissioning Plan dictates how Juniper Canyon 186 toxic turbine blades will be disposed of. What will you do as Commissioners to ensure that disposal of these toxic blades are done properly and not put in the Roosevelt landfill or anywhere else in Clicktack County?
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
We don't need to have that.
Thank you. Bye. Back in the room. Please come forward, Mr. Smith.
I hope everybody enjoyed their Fourth of July, because I sure did. Andrew Smith, Clicktack County. Thank you, Board, for the demolition derby. Went to it. All the upgrades, all nice. I know they're still trying to finish up, but it's looking good. Thanks, Ron. The only complaint I have is the speaker system. I heard a lot of people saying we couldn't even understand, so. Maybe not a new speaker box, maybe just take out the old speakers, put new ones in, because I was noticing that. Even if you were back a quarter of a mile, I still couldn't understand what anything was said. So it's an idea, since you're already in there repairing stuff. Other than that, hopefully everything else is good. Thank you very much.
Good. That was easy. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Back online. Anyone else wish to give comment this morning online?
Four nine zero one.
Four nine zero one.
Good morning, County Commissioners. Hold on a second. Need to mute that, mute that. Okay, this is Sherry from Clicktack County and I wanted to follow up from what Greg just said. You know, it was said on an interview by Commissioner Christopher on KLCK that if these repowering of the wind turbines get longer blades and a new generator, they would have to go through decommissioning and get a new permit. And so if that's the rules, I would like to see this foreign corporation obey these rules because any other citizen who would want to tear something down and rebuild it would have to get a demolition permit from the county. We'd have to pay our way. And also, I'm very concerned about, so I would like to see Juniper Canyon go through the right process, get decommissioned, get re-permitted and do that right. And also, I'm concerned, because we all must play by the same rules. Where are they going to dispose of these wind turbine blades? We already know that they were buried, the other ones from Good Node, that they were buried up at the landfill up in Roosevelt, but it's secret. And also, it was exposed by a worker, whether or not this is true or not, but a worker at the landfill, around 10,000 solar panels that were broken either in transportation or by the hailstorm were disposed of at the landfill. And I thought there was an agreement with the tribe that there wasn't going to be toxins put in this landfill. And already, it's been discovered that the liner to the landfill is probably punctured because the test water wells around the landfill have all shown toxins. So this is something that I believe if the county is the government and is to govern over and make sure that the water doesn't get toxic, I mean, you have all these rules that you guys do, so many rules. But it seems like when it comes to special favors for foreign corporations, those rules just go out the back door. And we just start throwing up toxic panels, wind turbines. We throw them away in the garbage for the next generation to deal with when their stuff's poisoned. So if you really care about the safety, health and the welfare of the citizens, make these foreign corporations do it right. And I'd like to know how they're going to dispose of these wind turbine blades. Does our county say it's okay that wind turbine blades go to the Roosevelt landfill? I would like a yes or no. Is that okay? Is solar panels to be disposed of in that landfill okay? If you could answer that, I would appreciate it. And make Avengrid go through the right process. It's a new project, needs to be decommissioned and re- permitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Back in the room. But he's quiet. Online, is anyone else wish to give comment this morning? Good morning, Gabby.
Hi, I want to thank the Commissioners for all your hard work. I know these last months have been difficult and stressful and you guys are doing well under pressure. So well done and continue. I want to talk about childcare because the situation in the last few months kind of sucked all the air out. And we're still in an issue where we're a childcare desert. I think that it is, if you can create a correctional department, possibly you could create a children and youth department as well concerning how you're going to build up infrastructure for families to be able to work and have affordable, accessible. And I, it's okay. And when I want to just, you know, you have to start addressing having more available possibilities for the youth in our county. Just getting things in some areas such as regulation basketball courts and public spaces. More amenities for the youth to be able to gather in safe ways and allow them to enjoy their childhood in this county as well. And I just feel that the lack of resources in this county for young people, for families with young children is debilitating economically and also for the social well-being. The other thing is we don't access grant dollars from the state level for children because we don't have anything for them to pour into our communities. You don't have a structure of childcare that we would actually see grant dollars that are awarded in other counties in the state because they actually have somewhere to place those grant dollars so that you can start building as well or creating or continuing something. And I think it's time to look at childcare and to look at youth and to assist them in an economic way. And to build families on that, on that level and to assist them as well. And this is pure and simple economics and people should be able to have a way of getting childcare so they can go and do their jobs. I do childcare in White Salmon and I'm going to tell you the two weeks prior to school getting out between private school and public school was bone crushing and it's the amount of need. And I think it's high time that we start addressing that as it's been, you know, decades of it being ignored. So I thank you for your time and good luck with everything.
Thank you. Back in the room. And back online. Mr. Rizzi.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Anthony Rizzi, taxpayer and voter for Dallesport, Washington. I find it interesting that you're being complimented on how you weathered the storm and everything else, all the problems. Yet, most of those problems are things that you created. So you're weathering stuff that you've created. So that's, that's wonderful. The big thing I would like to say is, you know, we need to save our jail. I don't understand why it's still that big of a problem. But the biggest thing that bothers me is I would like to see, and I've asked for it before and we haven't gotten anything. You're down to two big things. You either start this DOC, which again, like it was brought up before, you're starting a whole nother branch of government, which has a ton of money that's going to go into it versus keeping the jail the way it is with the sheriff and just adding the one thing that you're missing, which is healthcare for the inmates. So if you, the person you had in there doing the survey on the jail says that they have their jail done with medical people and it only cost them $550,000. Well, our jail's at 1.8, so you add 550 to that. So you're basically, you know, but yet if you add the DOC in there and set up your own, the whole DOC, Department of Corrections, that's going to cost you probably, and I'm just saying probably because I can't get anybody to give me any numbers, is that they're going, that's going to cost you at least a million dollars more than if you just left it alone and just added the medical that you need. So I really don't understand and I would really like to see these numbers. And I mean, not just a number here and a number there. I'm talking about, let's break it down, apples to apples, what it's going to cost. And I think that should be brought out and given to the public before any decisions being made behind closed doors on whether or not we're just going to power on with this idea of a Department of Corrections. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Back in the room. No. Anyone else online this morning? Zero zero eight eight.
Yeah, this is Dom Relg.
Good morning.
Morning. Yeah, I think we're looking at a really a dual standard with corporations and individuals on the county policy, the rules that apply and how they apply. But I started when that landfill first opened, I worked down there and they had a no hazardous material was allowed in that landfill. And if you'll take a look at, because you're looking at a looming disaster here that you're going to have. These blades are piling up. You take a look at Texas, Wyoming, South Dakota, Virginia, all these places. And that's these busted blades laying on the ground and the water runoff coming right into the streams and stuff around. That, those blades are made from hazardous toxic materials. But you guys better start addressing what is going on in this county because it's not going to get any better. It's going to get worse. And you guys are the ones that permit and, and I mean, not you directly, but the agencies in this county are the ones that are permitting and allowing these renewable energy companies to come in and do what they will at any cost to the county. And you know, these, Greg talks about these repowering, these wind turbines. That is a $70 billion gold mine that the Department of Energy has laid out. And they, they can, all they have to do is add some blades or whatever to these, repowering these wind turbines. And they get the subsidies and all the benefits that go along with it as if they built a new one there. So this is a scam that's going on. And when you're not forcing them to come back and re-permit and re-qualify for the county because you're the ones that gave them the permit and every, and entitled them to come in in the first place. So now it's up to you to start looking at what we're going to see down the road. That we better get control of what's going on in this county because like I say, all the costs are laying on the county, not on the renewable energy companies. And it's going to get worse and worse. And who's going to pay for it? The taxpayers of this county are going to have to come up with more money to provide for all the money that you're not getting from renewable energy. So this is a time to start really getting serious about this renewable energy and take a look at these corporations and how they're manipulating you people. I mean, not just the Commissioners, I mean, everybody in the county. You're all following it along with whatever they want to do. They're writing the rules.
Thank you very much. Thanks for calling in. Okay, back in the room. Everybody's quiet today. Online? Let me pop up.
Here we go. One more left.
Two six six two.
Hello, Commissioners. This is Tracy from Lisle.
Good morning.
And I listen to, good morning. I listened to last week's, I played the video of last week's recording, the recording of the video. And there's a few things in there that really bothered me. One is when Richard Foster said, said something about they had two and a half million dollars left over from the, from the declaration of winter storms or something from 2020 and 2022. They had that much money left over reserved from that, from that time when they got paid for the winter storm damage. A two and a half million dollars. And they said that they could probably use that for the airport. And I'm thinking, wow, that was a misjudgment of what the damages were or what they needed. And that was from 2020 and 2022. Now let's move forward to 2024. Well, we have a presidential declaration now, which is going to bring in even more money. So who is it that comes up with these, number one, if it's an emergency, I don't think that last storm was a, was a presidential declaration. I think of Katrina or something that homes are damaged, damaged and lives are lost, not severe storms where, as Jeff King says, we almost had to open the shelter, almost. And almost isn't a disaster. It's not a storm. You know, you say the money's out there and it's going to go somewhere, so we might as well get it. Well, not for the wrong reasons, not for when there's not people hurt and homes damaged. So where the money goes is to the people that are planning these, these, to be, to be there for the people. You know, for the responders and the police and the sheriff and the, and the first responders, the fire departments and such. You know, not for the people. It's supposed to be for the people. And then for that wildfire gas thing today with Public Works, you know, it doesn't say Clicktack County Fire Protection District Number Four. It doesn't say Clicktack Fire Protection District, you know, it says public agency. So I looked up public agency and some of the examples they give are homeland security, the agriculture, the public health. You know, those are, are public agencies. This is a fire district. You name it as Lisle Fire Department. Well, Lisle Fire Department, PO Box 63, that just happens to be David's address that he put in with the courts and, and with, with the auditor to be his address, PO Box 63. How is this going to be a man gas, gas use? They have to pay use tax on this gas. How will that be paid? When they go to the multi-five county, multi-age, you know, or state MOB fires? Are they going to get gas from there and get reimbursed from the state MOB and then get reimbursed from Public Works? You know, they have a budget and their budget is a budget line for, for gas.
Thank you.
They should be able to use their own gas.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for calling in. Online, anyone else? Not so far anyone.
That's all along.
Okay, that's great. We can move on. Commissioners, who would like to go first today?
Oh, I shouldn't go first, but I will. I guess I'd say my testimony today might be hopefully educating the public. We do Zoom in hopes to educate the public. My plan with Zoom and Zooming Thursdays was so the public can actually see what's going on and pay what, pay attention to what's going on in their county government. But with that, you have a responsibility to get your information correct. If you're going to be repeating people and quoting people, you should probably ethically make sure that your quote is accurate. And that's a general statement I'm making to the county. To Mr. Wagner, you said it correctly in your statement that Mr. Hunter said he was estimating. So I will leave that one at that. He was estimating. Mr. Smith, upgrades at the fairgrounds. Yes, it was good to see. I was able to get the upgrade for the handrails and the ADA in the budget this year. I was hopeful and I guess I was, I never asked, but I was under the impression, since my worry was about elderly climbing to the top of those bleachers, that the handrails would go to the top of the bleachers. They obviously don't, which I will bring up with Public Works and we'll have that question today. The lower section of walking gap path going up is like four feet wide and then it narrows to three. So I'm kind of curious if there's some state regulation that you can't put a handrail in something narrower, then we'll find out. The other things that I wanted to do this year that did not get accomplished as of yet was cover the beer garden, which will be done in time for the fair. I would like to put fans in the bleachers, misting stations and a bottled water refill station so people don't have to get bottled water out of the bathroom. They didn't get done this year. I hope to get them on the plan for next year. The other idea I got was from people that were sitting in, if you're looking at the arena in the bleachers on the far left side upper, the right side is covered with fencing, cyclone fence. The left wall is actually windows. No airflow, stagnant as hell and that sun just reflects and kills everybody in that section. So I would be very curious, as we go through the budget, I will be bringing that up to see if we can at least put reflective sunscreen or something on those windows. Why are they windows and not mesh so we can have some airflow? Because that's the problem. Why you need fans, no airflow. So yes, I, I guess I'm a little different. I've asked this board to have a holistic approach to the fairgrounds. I personally would like to see it more referred to as an event center and not just something for the fair to use. I would like us to sit down with all of our stakeholders, the Fair Board, the demolition derby, the chamber that uses it for home and garden, and even some public that use it for weddings and what other things to say, hey, what can we do here? How can we make this better and make it an event center that's used for more things? But I have yet to get a second vote on having that sit down in that discussion. So I look forward to trying that again on January 1st. Entercom system, you'll have to ask the Fair Board, if I remember correctly, and don't quote me out there. I believe the Fair Board changed out the entercom system in the last couple of years, but you'll have to double check with them to be sure because I can't, it's just what's in the back of my head that they, that they got some money for that. So ask them and then please report back to us if you find an answer. Sherry, want to correct you. You said that I said on the radio that when they repower windmills, they'll have to be decommissioned. That is absolutely not true. That is 100% not true. That's never said that. You don't have to decommission. a hundred percent not true, that's never said that, you don't have to decommission something unless you're tearing it down and never building it back up again. If you are upgrading or, or you're putting a new motor in your car, you don't decommission your car, you're, you're just upgrading it. So the statement that they would have to go through decommissioning, and I said that is, is absolutely false. They will have to get a new permit and they will have to go through the process again. How we dispose of windmill and solar blades? That is a big concern of mine, and if you've been watching, I believe we need county ordinances on windmill and solar blade disposal in this county. That is another thing that I have been stifled on with one vote, so I'm hopeful that eventually either this board or the next board on January first, I can get a second vote to actually take that matter up and we can actually create ordinances in this county that, that regulate how they dispose of windmill and solar blades. Until then, I will sit here waiting for a second vote to do so. Gabby, lack of resources for our youth, I one hundred percent agree with you. That is why a couple of years ago I pushed for a park fund, which was fifty thousand dollars per commissioner district to be used on parks, because I believe the parks in our county, well, frankly suck. No money's been invested, they're, have a lot of work to do, they don't facilitate ADA, they don't facilitate a lot. We did get one year's worth of funding, and then this board last year, again, two to one, chose to not refund that park fund. So I'm hopeful going forward, the county will have a shift in mentality and will spend some time and effort of the taxpayers' dollars back on the taxpayers and provide our youth something to do other than drugs, gangs and crime. I, I look at it as a small price that you pay that helps so many people. Parks are super important to me, and if you, I mean, I'm not just talking, I started a nonprofit to do just that. So it's, it's not just talk, I actually believe that. Mr. Rizzi, jail expenses, I, I would agree that whatever outcome we have will be more expensive than what we currently have. The rest of it, you know my, my stance on the jail situation. Mr. Eldred, I answered your question on disposal of solar and wind blades, I believe regulate them. And I'm still waiting to hopefully do that. Tracy, storm damage, I do have to push back a little bit on your, the storms weren't that bad and they didn't even have to open shelters and nobody was hurt. People died during that storm, ma'am. People froze to death in their car in Goldendale. There was a couple of deaths during that storm, so because of cold. And so I would, I would push back that there were shelters open. But some people don't feel good or safe or want to go to a shelter. And unfortunately, there were some bad things that happened there, so I, just to push back a little bit, just because some people don't feel the storm was met some classification for them. The, the federal government has their own classification system on what is covered and what isn't covered, otherwise they wouldn't have declared it. So that's, I just want to make sure those people that lost their lives in the storm are not cast a storm, cast away for political purposes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ireg, thank you for your comments today and for all the hard work that the fair board is putting in and continues to put in at the fairgrounds. And as well to Bob for pointing out that it's not very often we get two kind of kudos in the same right in a row, it feels kind of weird. So thank you for that, Bob. Mr. Wagner, why hasn't Seth Scorola been promoted to the Public Works Director? He is the county engineer, most counties actually have separate positions for the county engineer and the Public Works Director. They are different and they usually have different positions. What we did here in Clickitack County is we had a unicorn at one point with Mr. Kelsey, who served both roles and saved us a bunch of money. But we still had a deputy who was Mr. Hunter behind him. And in this situation, we have the same number of people, we didn't increase the number of costs, we just have the positions split. Mr. Smith, thank you for your comments on the speaker system, I'm sure it's being looked into after the weekend. Ms. Bosque and Mr. Eldred. Wind turbines can be recycled and they have been recycled elsewhere in the United States. Many of them are being turned into cement and reducing the overall environmental impact of cement plants. That is one option if it makes sense for the area. Another option, because they are primarily made of fiberglass, which is not considered a toxic material, they actually are put in landfills. I believe some have been put in our landfill and they get smunched and they get mixed up with all the other trash that goes into the landfill. And it helps to reduce the overall costs that you pay in taxes to Clickitack County, because they're required to pay the fees to the landfill, which the county receives a point, portion of. So while not all wind turbines are recycled, there is improvements that continue to happen in the energy sector, making them more recyclable, the newer blades, so that they don't have to just be turned into trash. Gabby, oh, it feels so good to be talking about childcare again, that means everything else is smoothing out. I just want to push back a little bit on what, what you and what Commissioner Christopher said, I grew up in this county. We live in paradise, there are an abundant amount of things for children to do here. We live in an outdoor mecca, especially on the west end of the county, where kids and the summer programs that the schools put on, that the nonprofit organizations put on, kids have an abundant amount of things to do, and I would much rather raise my child here than in any city. Even though we don't have Boys and Girls Club and other things in this county that a lot of cities have. I think that the children that are raised in Clickitack County have more things that they can do in the summer and they probably have more, an overall more things that they can do. While childcare is also front and center with the bridge closure on the west end of the county, that had a huge impact on the people who have to go to Oregon for their childcare. They had to take time off of work, we're seeing the same thing right now with the bridge being closed from seven PM to seven AM for the next two weeks. Some of our restaurants are having to shut down because their workers can't get all the way around and then work to drive around, you know, an extra hour on their commutes. So yes, absolutely, we are seeing the effects of a lack of childcare on the west end in Clickitack County. We are also seeing the effect of how we're so interconnected with Oregon and the bridge being down, and that can happen to any bridge. We have to continue to promote our local childcare options. And, you know, to go along with that, the need, White Salmon is working on building a splash pad, one more thing for the children to do and the adults to do in the summer when it's hot. Goldendale's working on it as well, I believe Commissioner Christopher got wet in the name of a splash pad this last weekend. So I think there's a lot of things that are being done for the children. I, I'd also like to, to talk a little bit about the core county functions, the things that we have to do as the county governorate, as the executive branch and the legislative branch. And as the budget gets tighter, we're going to have to get more into priority budgeting, where we're going to have to focus on the core county functions, the things that we are required legally to provide and do. The things that we've been providing for the last twenty years because of the landfill that does accept wind turbine blades, I believe, and has in the past, has allowed us to do. Those, those options are getting smaller, they're not growing. Until revenues start to grow, the things that we can provide are going to shrink and and I don't want to always throw cold water on it, but I always want to be a realist. Mr. Rizzi, the Board of County Commissioners has already made the decision and we've passed a resolution to start the DOC. We will be hearing an update from our HR Director, Rob Van Cleve, on the jail transition at eleven fifteen. Please stay on and listen to that and you can see what our next moves are going to be. I know it was a rollout plan of how we were going to do it rather than do it in one big push, but hopefully we'll be speeding things along. And Tracy, we cannot use FEMA winter storm money for building a building at the airport. I'm sorry to say that is not the case. While it would be nice to come up with the million dollar gap that we, we need at the airport so that the airport can continue growing, FEMA disaster dollars is not an option, so I'm sorry to say that is not the case. And with that.
Thank you. So Mr. Ireg, thank you again from, from me too with my seatmates, and be sure to carry that thank you back to the fair board for us. And we look forward to your next projects, it's a great place. And Mr. Yosel, thank you so much for calling in and your support, it means a lot to us. In bulk, I'll kind of answer some of the wind turbine republic service questions between Mr. Wagner and Sherry. I actually was afforded a tour of the solar sites and the windmills, so I learned a lot about that during that time. And recycling those blades is an international problem. And they do put them in landfills and they are allowed. But everybody's looking for new ways to take care of that, they know that there's going to be an abundance of them and there's got to be other ways that we can repurpose them. They found ways like Mr. Anderson said, to shred them and put them in cement. They use those for decking, sometimes shredding, but that's going to take developing a whole new business and a whole new program out at the landfill site that can accept that type of work possibly with some, you know, some bad chemicals or some things we have to handle. But the, the landfill has some extra property and it is an appropriate place. And as I understand through economic development, we've been approached by some companies that might want to create a company like that out there, which is going to help us in the future and help other counties too that have nowhere to take them. The wind turbines, from my understanding, may not have to do a permit, because when their original permit was issued, they understood that eventually each one of those wind turbines are clocked by a computer system. They know their optimum operation. And maybe when they go through their recycling time where they have to upgrade, they might have to do some of the engine parts, but they might have to extend them a little or take them down a little. And that range is within their permit system, so that's not considered decommissioning and redoing the whole thing. They're allowed that in their permit system that they have. And from what I understand, the wind turbines that are going through that now, they're within their permit system. Some of them may raise up a little few feet and could put an extender on them, that's allowed in their permit. So they thought of that in the future. DOE has incredible oversight, I did do a tour of the landfill too, and I was very impressed. If you can do, I don't know if they do community tours or personal tours, I'll have to ask them that, but they had an organized tour that I went on. I was really, really impressed with their operation and how organized they are and how I, it's just an incredible sight on how they're managing that site and taking care of it. The cleanliness, if you can say that about a landfill, was impressive, they're pretty good at keeping it contained. They even had a group of people who were contracted that were walking through the site in a different place that were picking up anything that happened to blow away, so nothing gets away from them, it's all contained. And they have an incredible oversight from Department of Ecology on any toxins or the leakage. The liner systems in place, it's functioning well, in fact, it's kind of a state of the art one. That was an incredible, we talked about the site when it was picked in the eighties and developed in the nineties. Because of its geology and the way that it's formed, they explained that on that tour, it was just a perfect site. And on top of that, they added an additional liner, so they double checked that. So we know that we have groundwater safety out there and they monitor it twenty-four hours a day. So I'm pretty impressed with our landfill and it has a good future, you know, it has some longevity, so I look forward to that for the people of our county to bring money in. It's a good thing. Gabby, thank you for keeping your eye on childcare. I look forward to the day that, I know childcare is moving at the state and at other counties, I look forward to the day that we can join in. I would have liked to have been on the forefront, but I'm glad we're going to be able to join in soon. As a grandmother and raising my children in this county, Mr. Anderson's right, we have an incredible place for our children to grow up, but I think society has changed and a lot more women are going to work and it's necessary that you have that double income. And it's also necessary that you have oversight for the children, you can't just let them go anymore like I used to do for hours and hours. It's a different world, so we need, we need those helpers to keep our children safe. I appreciate the fact, Gabby, that you've stayed on this and you're pushing it for our county, I think it is an important thing. Summertime, I had it on my list to talk to you about summertime, that is a problem, because as a grandmother, I have a daughter that works and we've talked about trading off days, what days could grandpa take them or I take them or husband come home from work early? You have to have that oversight and we're lucky in Clickitack County, we have a lot of good families that stick together and take care of each other. And I think that's it for me for today, but thank you very much for everybody for calling in.
Ready for payroll?
Yes.
Oh, consent, sorry. Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda with nine items.
Give me one second.
Okay.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Madam Chair, I move that we pay the payroll warrants in the amount of three hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-four cents and the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of zero dollars for the date ending July eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, or aye, thank you very much. Planning Department update with Scott Edelman. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning.
Thank you. Okay.
Sorry about that, I'll do that next time.
And you can have mine when we're done if you need it, okay.
Well, good morning. I'll start by going off script here and just talk about the repowering, since that's the topic of the morning and I know there's some confusion to it. And I also think I'm big on transparency like all of you and not just between us and the public, but between our department and you. So the way that I see conditional uses in related to repowering, ours a lot, well, that, I think the phrase was used, they need to play by the same rules as everybody else. If you've got a business out in the county that needs to change out a generator or change, replace a roof or do any kind of maintenance, they don't have to get a new conditional use permit, if, as long as they're still operating within the original conditional use. And so that's how we are treating the repowering of the Juniper Hills, is they are staying within the original permit, they're extending their blades a little bit and they're, the overall height, they're decreasing the maximum capacity of the generator itself, but for each of the turbines, but the overall twenty-four hour day capacity is increasing with certain efficiencies that they're able to get. But they're within the, the same parameters of the original approval, so there's no need to get additional conditional use permit or go through SEPA again. Another one came to. Another one came to us recently that was going to exceed those and I told them they would need to go through a new SEPA, new conditional use permit. So that, that's where we are as a department. So I want you to know that that's how we're treating those. Avangrid has been, and this isn't a comment from me on my, my views on any kind of renewable energy. I don't think my views matter. What we need to do is make sure they follow the code and follow their conditions. But Avangrid has actually been a very good community partner in that they contacted us to find out what did Good No do. And so that's where I found out, well, as far as planning went, Good No didn't do anything. They might have had an offhand conversation with somebody, but we have no record of anything with, with planning when they did their repowering. So we've been working with Avangrid to do, to go through all the things that do need to be updated because some things do need to be updated. The road hall agreement needs to be updated for the continued work. The architectural, architectural, not architectural. Missing one word is another A word. When you're looking at artifacts, historical artifacts, that review has to be updated for renewed ground disturbance because they're, but they're within the same area. They're in the same, all the same parameters that the original SEPA review happened. They're still within. So that's, that's where we are on that. And I just want you to know that that's how we're processing those. Yes.
Can, can I get a clarification question? What is the threshold on whether, let's say a windmill needs to go through a new SEPA or not get a new SEPA? Is that a height issue? Is that a blade length issue?
It's, it's a.
A ballpark?
Yeah, thank you for that question. It's, it's a variety of things. Juniper Canyon, for example, was approved to a certain height. I can't tell you offhand what that is. They didn't build all the way to that height. Their new, new proposal is still within that height, within the same blade length. There was a study area that was the SEPA study area. If they were to expand that study area or disturb beyond that study area, they would definitely have to do a new SEPA. They're still within the original SEPA, all their original reviews, they're still with.
So if they go out of their SEPA width or heights, they would kick them into any.
Any parameters that they go beyond what was originally studied.
That makes sense.
Yeah. So I appreciate that question.
Quite logical. Thank you.
So an increase just in the megawatt, the power output itself would not create, require a new SEPA, correct?
That's a funny one. I, I wouldn't think so, but then when we talked to them, they made sure that they Avangrid made, made sure that they showed that they were not increasing the capacity of the individual windmill as far as the peak capacity, but the overall efficiency. So I would, in my opinion, no, but.
Because I guess from my, my first thought, it, just because the efficiency increases doesn't mean you're going to have further environmental harm in any way. So why would you need to redo a?
And I, I agree with that.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. I mean, if the blades are longer and you're now sweeping a bigger area, there might be more birds spinning faster or something might be, but they're not spinning faster by putting a new motor in it. So I, I.
No, I agree with that.
Logic prevails.
Only brought that up because when they providing information, they highlighted they weren't changing the, the max output. So I think that's all I wanted. Oh, and then just, I mean, interesting, I do think disposal is important of, of whether the blades or panels like all of you. I think that's something that if, when we look at the E O Z sometime or the model decommission plan, that's something we should look at. I'll also say though, with our discussions with Avangrid, they're having to do a lot of recycling now, not based on any policy, but based on end users who have their own internal environmental policies. And they say, we will not buy power from you if you cannot demonstrate your recycling, reusing. So they're finding that there, I won't, don't, can't say a hundred percent, but the vast majority, they're having to find ways to recycle and not just dispose of in the landfills. That's second hand, but I found that interesting.
I've had conversations, several conversations with Avangrid about disposal.
Okay.
They're very interested in being doing it correctly.
Yeah. As far as Juniper Canyon, I don't think our E O Z or decommission plan can require us to tell them what to do with these at this point, but we can certainly ask. And maybe I think they, as a community partner, be willing to say, maybe, you know, here's what we did with them and for moving forward in the future. So we can, can look at how we can work with them. I'll move on down. I'll mention, I went to Trout Lake Community Council last Tuesday. Pat Arnold invited me and announced I was going to be there. So when I got there and I saw so many cars, I couldn't even find parking space hardly. I thought, wow, this is, and you know, about fifty to sixty people in the audience. That was communities really interested in planning. It started off with a really good presentation from a community group that has a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for medical program. And when they got done, pretty much everybody left. And so that was me and a handful of people, but it's still a great experience to get out there and to meet those folks. I'll just go through this quickly. Board of Adjustment, just want you to know, Smith RV Park, the Smiths have appealed the decision of the board adjustments to Superior Court. July first, last week, the solder bow and wine tasting room was approved. And there's no, no opposition at all. So that will be moving forward. And then I, as I mentioned previously, the Bundy conditional use for three single family dwellings is coming up in August. Planning Commission, you'll be seeing the consolidated SEPA and appeal and recommendation from the Planning Commission for approval of that rezon, the Monroe, Wilson Monroe rezon. We don't have a date yet, but we'll be working with that soon after we get to meet with the PA's office to talk about process. The fifteenth next week, we're going to be moving forward on the critical areas ordinance. I think, I'm hoping we can get through the last three chapters. One of those is very short. And then after that, the plan is to have a draft review, the, their next meeting of the whole document. And in the meantime, we'll route it to state agencies. I see that as a meeting where we'll invite state agencies. We've got a good contact to, to coordinate and hopefully get some input from them. And then once we get that meeting, we'll, we'll have a draft together that then we'll do the official routing to the various agencies. And then the public, of course, sixty day routing before we can move forward on that. So I'm hoping we can be, see some good, good movement. It's been delayed a bit by the number of conditional use or various other applications they've seen recently. I just want to mention the comprehensive plan solar ordinance. As you know, we received the grant. Working on the scope right now. I've had a few conversations with our facilitator. And I won't go into detail right now. There's a few issues we're working on, especially related to it being a two-year project as we applied for it when funding is only guaranteed for a year. So we're trying to have to work out some of the details of how that is. I think it's going to be based on task by task to make sure that for some reason, we're not funded for the second year that we're fully compensated for our work the first year is one of the concerns. I want to make sure that we're not committing to something that we already know going in, we can't complete if we don't get that second year. Project Advisor Committee for that. I think I, that is going to be a key element. So if you have individuals throughout the county that you know would be interested in being on the Project Advisor Committee either for a solar ordinance or for a comprehensive plan update, please send their names my way. Because I think that'll, that'll be a key element of public input that we receive through this project.
Do you have? I guess I'd say, do you have any inkling in your head to make that an application process? Are you going to have a? Do you want to see some kind of prerequisites of their capabilities or just Joe the Grave Digger can sit on that board too?
That's interesting. I've never worked somewhere where I had to screen because there weren't usually enough people that interested. So I had not put thought into any kind of screening other than targeted outreach, you know, having a limited number. So you don't have an unmanageable group, but making sure that the citizen groups and various groups are fully represented. So I had not thought about that, but I appreciate any input.
I just want to make sure that we have enough public outreach that the public knows that there is a group. If there's no interest in throwing in an application, they can. I don't want them to think that there's some secret group being formed.
When we form groups before, I don't know if you still do it with the groups, but we did an ad in the newspapers at least.
Yeah.
That's why I was kind of curious if you could give us or make up some kind of a this is what you envision this group to be, how many hours, you know, kind of a thing so that we might be able to spread it out amongst the community, Facebook and whatever, so people can kind of know what it is or what it's going to be.
Yeah, thank you.
You have a protocol, I think, yeah.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah. And I could say, I'd like to involve you at some, like this update. Once we do get the group together, so you can help determine if it's well balanced and if it covers the elements that we need to. Any other comments on that? Cause I appreciate it. Okay. Fee schedulers, want to mention, throw it out there, by the end of the year, I'd love to have a conversation about updating a few elements of it. We're trying to figure out now that we have a consultant contract. We've, we've got some challenges there because that it will be quite a bit more expensive whenever we use a consultant. Maybe more than I thought, two to three times our application fee. So this is the kind of thing that we need to make sure upfront. We let, let applicants know what the cost will be of reviewing the application if we're using consultants. Also trying to make sure that we have a way of determining which applications you use a consultant for. It'd be good to have categories so that every type of application such as energy projects, I'm seeing energy projects, we can simply say, okay, every energy project, we're going to be using a consultant. They can know upfront. It's tough when you get to something like a conditional use permit because some will be, some are breeze, there's no opposition, others are very difficult and we could use the, the beefed up findings that a consultant could help us. How do you tell one condition use permit before you even have a chance to review it that you're going to have to pay this fee versus another? That's a challenge that we're trying to figure out. Any input you have on that would be helpful, but we will need to use the consultant, especially with this, the grant funded project, taking a lot of my time. We'll need to make, we'll need to somehow cover the work that cover our work and make sure we can use it. So I don't know, it's a challenge. I was surprised to find out the, the cost of consulting would be more. I was surprised when we forgot our first quote of what it would be. It was seventy-five hundred dollars versus a twenty-four hundred dollar application fee. So this, this is a challenge we're looking at. I wanted to mention under Canvas, we had a very good multi-department meeting with them. As you know, we had to hold off on the binding site plan, waiting for their water systems plan to be approved by the state and our health department, public health department. That sounds like that'll probably take about a month. So it's going to be a while before you see the binding site plan. They do have crews of people, local folks waiting to get to work. And so there are some things they can do, some of the conditions in their approval had to do not with a binding site plan, but with prior to ground disturbance that they've met those. So certain things, some grading they can do, roadwork offsite, some of the onsite preparation work they can, can get started with. So we're glad that we're able to at least come up with some things with them that they could do. Planning can't sign off on anything until the binding site plan is done, but there's other work that we don't sign off on that they can work, get to work on. The battery storage moratorium, I'll have that for the packet for you next week. Making the draft changes that you made, trying to put in some language. Chair Christopher requested regarding storage of warehousing of, of old batteries. I made a few phone calls about what that looks like.
Old or new?
Old or new? Yeah, yeah. And so I'll have some information for you and that'll be a draft, fully draft format. I'm gonna, we'll go by the PA at some point, but it'll be after you've had a chance to review it as you'd requested. That's all I have. I passed out the permit totals. Again, it's just for the year, but Debbie told me this morning that she's gone back about five years and I think we're back to twenty nineteen. So we can start presenting some information that might mean a little bit more if we can look at trends and see how these, this year compares to previous years.
Great.
That's all I've got for you.
Yep, that was a lot.
Thank you, sir. Very detailed and well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have anything? Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Hunter. Oh, Department Update with Public Works Director Jeff Hunter and County Engineer Seth Scorola. Thank you.
You're just trying to get me to make another remark, huh?
Okay. It looks beautiful.
The fields are very pretty.
Good morning, Mr. Hunter.
Good morning. Already went through consent agenda. We have one pay estimate to Hail Construction for the sale baron and the amount of two hundred and sixteen twenty-nine. And other than that, we'll move on to the construction program.
All right, Bickleton Area Paving. We're still waiting for the last of the signs and the crosswalk markings to be completed and that project will be done. It's one of the pictures I handed you today is one of the sections that we finished. Sundale Old Eight, work continues as it has for the last couple of weeks, excavations and embankment construction as well as culvert installations. White plastic edge lines was supposed to happen this week, but the contractor ran into some equipment issues. So we're waiting for a new schedule on that. On design, not a lot changed from last week's report. We're still working on the sunny side road overlay design. Bridge repair bundles, they have a kickoff meeting this morning to get the consultant started on those. Pickled an overlay in the Box Springs vicinity. We're still working through Washdod on that federal paperwork. So we can get that project hopefully out to add this fall for construction next year. The new white plastic edge lines and curb warning signs, their design has started on those and the road safety plan update, we're drafting the RFQ and hope to have that out soon once Washdod approves that. That's all I got.
Okay, moving on to the maintenance side of things, flagging for the HWD, which is falling weight deflectometer test has to do with the GeoTech report that is being done on the roads for the Juniper Canyon project is our people are flagging for that, for the consultant. And the rest of them are on the west side working on the B S T, we're, are drawing, working with the west side people. West Side is doing the B S T over by out of Glenwood. Upcoming facilities projects, the roof is complete on the sale barn. Sheet metal installation is scheduled, hopefully to be complete this week. Concrete pour for the wash rack is scheduled for next week and the electrical will be put into. We are actually ahead of schedule, I've been told. Good deal. So yes, we will be, the building will be, will be used this year at the fair. Superior Court remodel courtroom is officially closed. It was actually closed last week, but today was this first day or yesterday was actually contractors starting work today. They moved in and they're actually staying here because they're out of Vancouver. Events, demo derby went well from what I hear. You know, there's some other things I will get into those here in a minute that could be improvements and I don't disagree. Some of the stuff we did, for instance, the west side, when we remodeled that side, we just put the, because of due to cost constraints, we just put up what was there. We never took the windows out. We just re-signed. So could we put up a fence? We could, yes. Again, there's only so much money. We try to spread it around to everything. So I, you know, we have done quite a bit at the fairgrounds. Mr. Christopher has been a big supporter of that. And, but so have all the other. There's been a lot done there, a lot. New riff on the grandstands. The exhibit, when I got here, the exhibit building had the windows boarded up. So we, there's been a lot done. We worked hand in hand with the Fair Board. And I may be overstepping, so if I am, I apologize. Years, yes, the announcement system, announcer system, there's two, the Fair Board has their announcer system that works for the fair. And there is an announcer system that goes with the facility. We, you know, we've looked at doing it. We can upgrade it, but we haven't in the past because a lot of the bigger events bring in their own announcing stuff. Now it's a possibility. It does need to be upgraded. Be nice to do a wireless system. We have done some of that already, but we have not done it for the main announcer's booth at the fair where, where they stand up, they're elevated. That's the last system that needs to be upgraded. So we could talk about that during budget as a project. Again, that's where we stand on that. I said, a lot of the events bring in their own system because they're aware that one is pretty antiquated. But I don't know what they cost. We'll, we'll look into that. We'll have numbers for budget time. Uh, let's see, Fuel Island, we're still working through the plans on that. Election Security, the security camera's been installed, the treasures drop box was also installed with that project. That completes that phase. We are working with the auditor to see where the next locations are, where she wants boxes, if she wants relocated and what she wants. And then at that time, we will do that. She has a grant to pay for this. And then of course, a lot of that becomes timing. Because you know, the ideal time to move a look, the ideal time not. Better make sure it's not, or be quoted saying, I wanted it moved during, would be right before the election. But that's not my call. That's the auditor's call. Okay, Beer Garden Bleacher Roof, work starts this week. We would have really liked to have gotten it done by July fourth. We did, you know, we still don't have our carpenter back at a hundred percent. He can't get on a ladder. So we're trying to get him released. We're actually going to bring a guy out of the road crew to help. The only other thing we have on is the back to school bash on the courthouse lawn. I think it's the first week, weekend in August. I think it's the first week, weekend in August. Historically, we've given waivers to that because it is a school. It is a school event. We don't do much. It's on the lawn. I mean, it's twenty five dollars. That's what our cost is. I mean, that's what we charge. They asked again this year if we would entertain a waiver. So here we are. I leave it up to the board.
What do they do?
They set up things. It varies from year.
Okay. Oh, that's cool.
We have probably more familiar.
The answer was they have activities for the kids and they hand out school supplies for all young zoom that didn't hear that.
Yes, I'm, I'm not familiar. Don't have young kids anymore. If you have young kids, you're probably familiar.
So.
Well, I don't know if I can waive twenty five dollars. Our budget would be severely hindered. No, I've always supported donating county resources or property and not charging youth events a fee. So I'm going to continue on with that theory on this and, and say yes, grant the waiver.
Who puts it on?
It's a good question. I'm not really sure who puts on the event. I don't think it's the, it's not the chamber. Not really sure who. I can find that out for you.
But I'm, I'm fine with it. It's just on the courthouse.
It's probably backpack for kids or something that puts it on.
Did Community Days pay the, pay the county?
Yes.
They did pay.
They paid the twenty five dollars.
Okay.
And it's, it's very minimal. Again, we don't really, when it comes to account, to the courthouse lawn. The twenty five dollars really is to try to recoup some of the electric costs. Because technically we don't do anything. We say, here's the lawn. We're not setting anything up. So it doesn't, it's not a really any extra for our guys, but there is a cost for electricity.
Well, I did hear multiple people at Community Days thank Public Works for the new seating of the picnic table that was put out there last year. So they enjoyed a place to sit, not in the grass. So they did, I also heard a complaint that somehow we're responsible for the trees that came down because you guys overwatered. And that caused the trees to blow down. So yes, we had to kind of, you know, nip that one in the bud. So, yeah.
That was a few years ago.
That was a few years ago and it wasn't because the county overwatered. I have a clarification question too, if you're ready. Handrails, the handrails only go up partway. I was thinking they would go to the top. Is there a, you might have heard my, I understand the walkways, you know, four feet wide and then it gets down to three foot. And I was wondering if there was some law that says you can't put a handrail in the middle of three foot? Or did we just choose, we only did the lower ten feet?
Well, we chose mainly for budget reasons because you have to have landings if you look. So we have to revamp that. We, we would lose even more seating.
Right. So you would, you would have to, you can't just put a handrail on what's there without literally ripping out seats.
Right.
To do so. That, right. That was what I expected the answer to be. Just want a clarification. With that, I, I'm personally, let's just roll with what we have for now and not rip out more seats. West End windows, I'm not, I guess I'm saying I'm not asking for that whole wall to come down.
Right.
But is there a way to look in maybe removing the plexiglass or whatever's in there and putting up some kind of fencing or something to keep people from jumping through the hoop? That should be a fairly quick and easy fix that would allow some airflow to come through that side.
Yeah, we can look at like black screening or something.
Something to keep people from busting it, breaking it. Nobody's going to cut it.
Right.
Jump through it, fall through it, but, but something to allow some airflow is all I'm asking for on that.
No, we'll take a look.
So don't, don't give me an estimate to replace the whole wall or I'm going to vote no.
I get that.
So whatever cheap alternatives we can, and then yeah, if we can do something with the announcer system or bring us a price, it would be nice to get some of these. I, I commend the fair board. They have their projects that, that they want done that don't always may not always jive with what the rest of the public wants to see done. So if we, they, they kind of do their thing. If we can continue to throw a few dollars from the county into doing our thing. I did notice where they have the, the cowboy option, the main stage there, you call it?
Yes.
The building to the west of that, as you walk into the parking lot, they have a window on the side of that building. There's a crack about that big in insulation that we're going to, we're, if we don't do something with the seal around that, we're going to have much bigger problems.
Okay, we'll take a look.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's huge. So that was one thing I noticed that might be a semi cheap fix before we're replacing a dry rotted wall.
Yes, we, we, I haven't had a chance to really walk through there.
I almost reached through between the two panes and grabbed the insulation that was back there. It was almost big enough for me to get my fingers through the crack. So.
This is on the fair board office building?
I believe it's fair board office building. It's the, we'll call it the east side of the, that building that the office building slash bathroom slash everything's.
Okay. Yeah, I know where you're talking. Yes. Yes.
Just take a look at the window and you put another seal in it or whatever before winter hits and I'll be happy.
Okay.
Thank fair board breaking windows down.
It's for air.
Air conditioner.
I'm not sure who the rest of the public is, but I'm pretty sure that the fair board does a good job representing the public. Would that have been put up there for those windows? Because that's on the west side and that's why, that's where the weather comes from. And so it's to protect the, the grandstands.
It's possible. I don't know. Because they were up there before I got here. We just haven't changed it. I mean, we've done a lot. And again, we worked hand in hand. The counties worked hand in hand with the fair board. Fair board, a, a lot of people think the fair board runs the fairgrounds. They really don't. I mean, they have it during their window. They've been very cooperative. You know, letting the county make moves and some of that was made moves to do with what was, a lot of the stuff we do up there not only benefits the fair, but also looks at, do we have availability to rent the space then? That's what we're looking at is stuff that we can rent, not just for the fair. We want it to be a multi-use facility and yes, that's, that has been pitched around many a times as. And we've done some of that.
Like I said, I would love to see an events group set by this board with all the user groups and some general public that was interested to make us a, a sense list, if you will. Of, you know, ten items that, that they could see needs improvement. Fair board through their money allocation of upgrades might choose a few of those things. And then we know we can do, you know, we rank them and we can check them off our box and it's more of a multi-use facility that can then be, because I, I personally, I don't know, maybe there's something we could do to make it more wedding venue friendly. We make money off that.
Yes.
So if we can put a small handful of dollars into it and then more people use it as a wedding venue, why wouldn't we? But we need to actually have, I feel, sorry, that we need to have a advisory group of some kind that actually has a wedding venue person sitting on it, giving us those ideas. Because they don't know where to give those ideas. But that's, that's just me.
Now, good, a master plan would be a good idea.
I agree.
Next question. Did we receive a grant to cover the road hall agreement fee for the Juniper Canyon? Could you please clarify that?
I don't know where they came up with that bunch of malarkey beyond. I don't know. How else to say it? Irritates the hell out of me because it's taken out of context. There is no grant for that. And I was just giving the board some, I, you know, and trying to actually help the out that we charged for the road hall. That comes out of Title twelve. Lund Hill was not, Title twelve was not approved at that time. So Gordy, who was, who ran that at the time, the Lund Hill thing, could not require road halls. I mean, he did for that, but for repower, we couldn't require road halls. Because it wasn't part of Title twelve.
And it's one of the reasons we updated Title twelve, just so that now we can.
Exactly. So a lot of that, we're taking completely out of context. And no, there was never a grant. For, I think there might be some miscommunications, but I'm not, I think where that came from, but I'm not going to state it because then, you know, that's making two acquisitions that I'm not sure of. And I'm not going to do that because I don't know for sure where that idea came from. I have an idea, but it didn't come for me. There was no grant for, for, and if there was, he needs to go to Ken Nichols because Ken Nichols would have been the one that would have got the grant because we sure the heck didn't get a grant for Juniper Canyon. We wouldn't apply for a grant for Juniper Canyon.
It's, well, that's the thing is it's not our company. So if there was a grant, Avengrid would have got the grant. They would use that money and wrote you a check and you'd have never known where the money came from.
Right, exactly.
You're not going to go ask for a grant for a private corporation somewhere else and the county to be responsible for facilitating grant. We don't do that with Avengrid and we don't do that with anybody. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
This board wouldn't allow that to happen.
Correct. And, and if a previous board did, please find the paperwork and show us.
They did. Nobody would allow that.
Hence the reason I said find the paperwork.
Lund Hill, you said the solar project.
Yes.
They did have.
Yeah.
Okay. So you, you said the repowering of Lund Hill, and I think you just misspoke there.
Yeah, I did misspoke. That was my fault. That little bit it worked up. No.
I understand. I just want to make it clear so nobody misses it for the next week.
Call. No, Lund Hill had a road hall.
Yes.
Yes. And they were reimbursed, the county was reimbursed for whatever prices came. Our road halls have always been done that way since we came here. We brought that here. So again, I've been here a lot longer than somebody else that is saying all this other stuff. So. Yeah. I worked in that field. So.
Did Goodno, for their repowering, did they do a road hall agreement?
Good no, good no. Uh, no. We didn't have one at the time.
So we didn't have one in the first place with Goodno? And so when they came and they did their repowering, Title twelve was in effect at that time, right? Or Goodno was right before?
Goodno was right before that. Well, the one that came in, the one that really kicked this off was when Pacific Corp did the one out on Hockter. We, we had no, we had no ability to do a road hall with them because they would have had to file SEPA. And at the time, and again, I'm not, I don't want to speak for Scott or planning. I don't know what their, what their thresholds are, but it did not fall under SEPA because they weren't changing their footprint. All they're doing is pulling the heads off and the blades off. Again, this might be a good discussion to have in a workshop. So we can get planning and everybody together. That way I'm not speaking for planning and I don't want to do that. That's more of a Scott thing. Because at the time, until Title twelve, till we upgraded Title twelve, there was no road hall. We had no trigger to give them, make them do a road hall without, because we did it under the environmental SEPA Act. But since then, with the support of the board, we were able to get Title twelve upgraded. It's an ordinance now. We don't have to have that.
Well, and I think that's part of the problem is, I think there may have been loopholes or gray areas in the past. May or may not have been put there intentionally, may or may not have been wanted to get upgraded. But this board did want to upgrade them and they are now closed and there are no loopholes anymore. But that may not fit the narrative. Some people want to push. So they still want to bring up problems that occurred five, 10, 15 years ago that, that are not on this board and this board has addressed. So that's where I think it's at. I think there's a soapbox that should be removed from the room.
Are there, when they're hauling the turbine blades, I know they're mainly open, are they over eighty thousand pounds?
Some of them are. The, the big one is the nacelles.
I know that, but I know the nacelles are over eighty, but, but if you're just changing out blades and not the nacelle, would you need a road haul because you're just hauling on a county road under the current county weight limit? Just like any logging company or anybody else, nobody else gets a road haul.
You're right, except for they typically doing more loads. Logging company might do one load, a legal load with an excavator or an overweight load. But when you're, when you're running that many trucks up and down the road, it isn't just, it's an ESO loading thing. It isn't just the blades. Yeah, they may, they're not legal loads. They are overweight loads, but they're not super loads like in the cell. But they are overweight. So if you figure, they typically do twenty, thirty urbans. So at three, you know, if they do twenty, that's sixty loads.
Well, that would.
You gotta haul out, but they usually cut them up. I don't know.
I would argue that they're longer too. So they are, they might be doing shoulder damage where a standard truck isn't doing shoulder damage, taking wide corners and, and what.
Right. Title twelve does not specifically just call out win, win projects. It calls out all industrial projects. So anything. And another reason we put that in there is, is if our hope was, is we couldn't get backdoored by F S A.
Couldn't get loophole.
Right. And now it's an ordinance and they have a lot tougher time of saying, well, you don't have to do that. But we do have to do that because we have an ordinance that says. So yeah, we did that. We wrote it. So even the repowering, they still have to come see us, even if they're just doing blades. Now, if they replace one blade or something that's standard maintenance, that's different. But if they're actually repowering, where they're replacing all the turbine blades, then they need to come talk to us. Because they typically do more than just that. They want to improve their roads. So now they're hauling rock, they're hauling water, they're hauling a lot of stuff and that adds up. Because our roads don't have. They, you know, they're only, they're built for a lot less loading. So they take the life out of our road.
Right. And that's, that's, I think the key that everybody needs to understand is you build a road to last twenty years at five trucks a day. And if they're putting fifty trucks a day on there, now they're only last 10 years and the taxpayer's got to fix the road. So we're making them do the road hall agreement. So the taxpayer doesn't have to fix the, the end of life of the road.
Right. Whether that you're, that is, you get.
Brownie points, you get gold star.
You understand that very well. I am, again, thank you. That's exactly what it is. Just because the road doesn't show any damage, doesn't mean it wasn't.
Right.
That's why we do the road hall.
Yeah. Good example is that is the, the Bluebird project out there. There wasn't heavy loads associated with that after the concrete and all that. But it's the number of vehicles per day using that road gravel road. It's not used to that many vehicles per day, moving all that smaller fines off the road. So that's why road halls are in place. We can maintain those.
Right. And when we gave an estimate, it was just that estimate of what we think it's going to cost for us to do the work to say, this is the life you're taking out of the road.
Yeah, I don't know that you've ever given me anything other than an estimate on anything unless it was actually in a contract form.
Exactly.
You are very careful to never give an exact number and it drives me nuts. But okay, anyway.
That was the last of my questions, man.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank, well done, gentlemen. Continue forth.
Okay. Department update, Sheriff Department. We have Carmen Knopson, Karen Ellings.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sheriff Songer and Chief Deputy Culp are absent this morning. So we're here to present. I'll read Sheriff Songer's update. Says there were a total of seven thousand two hundred and ninety eight calls for service from January first through July eighth. In addition to the calls for service, deputies served a total of eight hundred and eighty seven civil papers during that same time period. The sheriff's town hall meeting held at the community center in Dalsport on June twenty ninth. From nine AM to twelve PM was a success. There were approximately fifty people that showed up for the meeting. And everyone had the comment to, had the chance to comment or ask questions during the meeting. In my opinion, that is an example of freedom under the First Amendment of the Constitution and the Washington State.
In my opinion, that is an example of freedom under the First Amendment of the Constitution and the Washington State Constitution. I still believe the best way the county commissioners could handle the jail issue is to allow an advisory vote by the citizens of Clicktack County. On the general election ballot this November twenty twenty four. Vote on three choices. A, do not shut the current down in the current jail and make improvements that may be needed. Keep operating the jail under the sheriff. B, contract the jail inmates with the Northern Oregon Regional Correction Facility Norcore in the Dallas. Or C, the Clicktack County Board of Commissioners take over the current jail and run it themselves. All of us elected officials work for the citizens of Clicktack County. We serve the citizens and they are our boss. This way the citizens of Clicktack County would have a voice in regards to us closing our jail. Or and contracting with Norcore or keeping our jail open and the jail being operated by the sheriff or the Board of County Commissioners. Chief Criminal Deputy Lauren Kulp and I will not be able to make the B O C C meeting. My undersheriff Carmen Ops and Chief Civil Deputy Karen Elings. Will be attending and giving the Board of County Commissioners the Sheriff's Office update. So we've been pretty busy and I apologize for this being pretty brief. The Patrol Division currently has two vacant positions. Uh, we do have a conditional offer for an entry level position and we're going through the background process for that. This process will take upwards of several months to complete. The last patrol test was not well attended and we will have to reschedule, reschedule an additional test for entry and lateral positions. We only had uh, one test. Um, one on our list. Uh, Civil Service has been conducting the sergeant's exams this week to accomplish this. Melanie has had to work around patrol schedules, vacations and the availability of persons for the oral boards. Once that testing is complete, we will conduct interviews and make the selection to fill the two sergeant positions. We don't have any, there was no major incidents reported for the. Uh, Bickleton Alderdale Creek Pioneer Rodeo or the Glenwood Rodeo or the demolition derby. Um, I have to say I was um, at the demolition derby um, as part of Rule Seven. And was very pleased to see how well attended that event was. Um, I agree with the um. Needed additions of. Some fans and I was very much afraid that we would have more people succumbing to heat, uh, exhaustion or heat stroke under those. Uh, on the bleachers just because of the intense heat. Um, I know that the EMS did respond to several calls over there. Um, and I am. I would suggest for future events like that, that not only do we have EMS on the side of the Derby, but we actually have a first aid tent on. The side of the bleachers for the public. I think it's a really uh, vital piece that we are missing over there. Because. If the Derby is going and somebody collapses, you can't exactly just run across the arena to assist. So I think that's something that we should look into for future events is having a first aid tent at those events like that. Uh, might be something to think about also for the fair coming up. I'm sure that the uh, heat's not going to be over in August. Um, typically it's just as hot. Some of our patrol statistics, um, from June first to. Uh, this morning, we've had eight hundred and forty three calls for KCSO. That same timeframe, uh, deputies have written a hundred and twenty one citations. And I broke those down ninety three traffic, four non-traffic, seventeen criminal traffic and seven non-criminal traffic. They've been really busy. Um. They're catching a lot of traffic speeding through the county, which we know that people speeding uh, can cause accidents. So. The more numbers we can reduce for accidents in our county, the better. Marine Patrol. Uh, the Ospreys back in service following the encounter with the log that was submerged about eighteen inches under the surface. These repairs would not have been possible without the help of Reserve Deputy Clinton, who with his knowledge and experience was able to successfully make the repairs, including making a trip to Tacoma. And of course there were others who helped with the repairs. I'd like to note that uh, Ken Clinton donated, I don't know how many. Um, countless hours uh, to make those repairs. So we're pretty lucky to have him on board and able to help us with Marine Patrol. That's just one of the few things that he does for our department. He spends countless hours uh, with Marine Patrol, with the deputies, with investigations. He's that. One guy we always rely on for everything and all of his hours are volunteer and we're pretty, pretty lucky to have that um. In our, in our department. Operation Drywater was July fourth through the sixth. The Marine Patrol deputies participated in this event and hit the water every day. They patrol the waters to ensure the safety of boaters, paddleboarders, kayakers, windsurfers and fishing vessels, vessels. Marine Patrol is an important division of KCSO and we are fortunate to have dedicated deputies out patrolling the waters. They also participated in an event. Uh, down at Horse Thief where the. Discovery Center. Right, it's the Discovery Center. Uh, the migrant kids come over and they get a, they had a two day event, so the. Migrant kids got to come over and learn about water safety. Uh, they had the jet skis out there, the. Troll guys were out there so the kids could play in the water and learn about water safety. Go ahead.
What is Operation Drywater? It's sort of drunk driving on the water.
Okay, right. Got it. That's the name. Got it. So it's a nationwide event and so we participate in that.
Okay. Can I add to um. Reserve Deputy Harden, who's on the west end of the county, is also BML certified, just like Reserve Clinton. And he's the one who spent the two days of Horse Thief. Um, so. Our, our volunteers are fantastic.
B M, B M L certified is.
Basic Law Enforcement Marine.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry. New acronyms.
Yeah, right. Because we have to have an acronym for everything. Um. Corrections Division, the Correction Division has been extraordinarily busy. There have been sixty five bookings from June first till July ninth. And sixty six releases during the same time period. Apparently there are twenty and twenty nine inmates lodged at the Clicktack County Jail. Court appearances are now all in person, including the persons who have charges out of West District Court. And jail staff will once again be traveling to White Salmon for court weekly. Uh, last, this last week was our first uh, in-person court that we've had in some time. Um, unfortunately, Nelly, our transport vehicle has a air conditioning issue and it's not safe to put inmates in the back. Uh, without any kind of airflow. So it took three vehicles um, for us to run all the inmates down. Um. So we're going to see an increase uh, again in our travel costs, expenses for fuel. Um, repairs to Nelly and of course overtime. It takes a minimum of two people to be down in West District Court. Um, and still maintain uh, three to work in the jail. Um, and. With the assistance of posse because there's still court that has to happen during the day while those guys are down there. So there's East and Superior that people still have to go to. So. Um, it's going to be a juggle and I'm sure I get to spend a little, little more time in court again. Uh, two members of the Corrections Divisions are out on military and F M L A leave. And these vacancies, along with the other vacancies, are an extreme burden to the staff, require them to have few days off, fewer days off in overtime. Um. Just this month alone, uh, there's been thirteen overtime shifts and in June there was thirty six overtime shifts. That doesn't include the days that didn't can be considered overtime because they didn't meet the criteria. They were just extra days worked.
Is that all uh, road or is that jail or?
This is jail.
Jail.
Yeah. Um, I made some notes. I've been meeting with Aaron weekly in the jail. Um. I think that program is going well. We now have a veteran coming in and also meeting with our veterans who are incarcerated to offer them additional services. Um, that weren't pro available before. Um, this, today we're going to be meeting up with Brian B. We're going to go over protocols. He's never met Aaron. I want everybody kind of on board to. To know that we're made, that what we're all doing together. Um, Aaron's working. Um, at ordering uh, Narcan kits that will be distributed to inmates upon their release. Um, she's got a grant to pay for all of that. Uh, we're currently working with Aaron and behavioral health. Um, to get a um, subject out of jail. He'll be going into a mental health facility. They've been calling every day on him and checking on him. And um, they are actually going to help facilitate the transport and pay for those costs. Um, that will be very beneficial to us as we don't have available staff. Um, I'm sending out an email to Casifa. Um, that's all the fire chiefs across the county. It is fire season. Um, we've been fortunate on the Fourth of July, Rule Seven only had one fire and that was quickly extinguished down at. Um. Mary Hill. But. We know the bigger fires are probably on the horizon and. There's always risk when. Different fire districts are out, um, and they have to drop a trash pump out into a, a water source and they leave that pump out there. Uh, it's subject to being stolen because unfortunately there's unsavory citizens who think things belong to them and not to the. Fire district. So we've offered and I'll be sending an email that if they, we have a fire and. Those pumps have to be deployed. Um, that we put a posse member out there to keep that place secure and that somebody can't walk off with one of those pumps. Uh, fire districts have pretty limited budgets and those pumps are expensive to replace. So I think that's an important. Um, thing that we can do and the posse will, um, will have a list of people available to help with that. Um. We have, uh, in August, we're going to have National Night Out with WSP. I believe the date is August sixth. As soon as I have more information, I'll get that out to you. Um, I'd also like to um, talk a little bit. I'm going to be making a call to public safety testing. We've been doing civil service tests now. Um. For years and we're just not really getting a good response. I think it's, um, we're not getting the word out there. People don't know we're hiring. We don't know, they don't know how. We don't have the ability just to get out nationwide. Um, we know that this is a great place to live. And I think we need to look at using public safety testing uh, to maybe get a better pool of applicants to choose from. We've got to do something. We've got uh, openings in the jail and we have openings um, within the Patrol Division as well. So. And it's, I don't, it's not any fault of Melanie. It's just the way it is. Um, I'd also like to um, bring up. I'd like the Board of County Commissioners really to. Improve the communication between you guys and the jail staff of the processes that are going on. They didn't know that you guys were voting on a, the resolution to create the um, Department of Corrections. That was never. Uh, brought to them. Nobody said anything. They don't always have time to look at the agenda of the day. They're pretty busy over there. I would encourage you to go sit in on a Monday when it's a docket day, which we have coming up next week. Last week, I think they had eighteen people uh, just on the Superior Court docket. It was pretty crazy over there and I think you guys need to understand the totality of what goes on during that day because. For three people. One in the control room and two on the floor. Um, it's pretty insane to have to, to work through that day and not get a lunch break or a meal break or a bathroom break. Because all you're doing is running, running, running and you're meeting the needs of those inmates because they're still in the cells. Um, needing this, needing that, and there's still the hourly checks and then there's the new arrests. They had four new arrests on top of that. Uh, busy docket day that day. And then there was also East District Court and West District Court to deal with. So I think. Really, if you guys. I think it's an important step you need to take and go sit in there on a Monday, on a docket day and understand what goes on. So. Any questions?
Um, clarification on who was doing uh, inmate transport to West End. Was that Corrections or was that Road?
Uh, actually it was.
Or both and posse and all of you love.
It was um. Casual, two casuals down in the jail, uh, special deputies, uh, Mike Delengas and Susan Saba. Susan is a retired deputy out of California. Uh, she's been a posse member and she's now been hired as a casual employee. And then I went down as well, uh, because we had four males and a female to drive down. So it, it took three vehicles.
Right. Uh, well, uh, reason I'm asking is because if the Board of Commissioners takes over the jail management. I, I'm. Maybe I'm speculating incorrectly. But I would assume we would, uh, we as a board that now runs the jail would lose some of those resources.
Absolutely.
Um, whether that's deputy staff, whether that's you, whether that's reserves, whether that's. Uh, timber, whether that's posse. Um, so um, we would probably see whoever we hired as a jail manager asking for more. FTEs to accomplish said tasks.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's why I'm trying to get ahead of what I feel the budget will be. Um.
I'm glad to meet with anybody and help facilitate that. I think that. Uh, being down as the chief of the jail for a number of years, I'm very familiar with the staffing needs um, and the lack of staffing that we've had. Um, at least out. For the last seven years that I've, I've been with the department on this road.
Um, in your uh, your update here, um. I, I don't want to mention any names for obvious reasons. There's no need to. Uh, but it says there's a, um. Uh, supplemental request for twenty grand for uh, corrections to an L and I deputy under, what was that about? Oh, sorry. I fast forwarded. Yes, I'm sorry. I'll wait.
Yep, I would like to know.
I was on the next page.
That is not the fault of the Sheriff's Office.
Right, 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 right. That's why I was, that, that was the question was asking for clarification. I may need the question because she'll clarify it perfectly for me. So, perfect. I apologize.
You're all good.
Any other questions for Carmen? Okay. So I have lots of words on the pages and I will try to be succinct because I know you can read them as well. Um, for staffing for the Civil Division, McKenna is still out on intermittent leave. Which means it's Kim and I until our new person is hired. Um, so I think Kim is doing a phenomenal job. Um, and we learned from last year, uh, when we were short staffed, how to save time and make sure we get stuff done. So. It's much smoother than last year. Um. We did cut down the White Salmon office hours. It's now Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays from ten to three. Uh, it is closed today for those of you who are listening because Kim is here answering the front phones while I am here. Um. So that piece of equipment, the zebra printer that we purchased for the ID cards. They uh, we requested a replacement for the current one, which was a two-sided. They sent us a one-sided one. So we're trying to get that. Uh, resolved, but um. We, I have figured out how to print two-sided by hand feeding and takes a lot longer, but um. We're getting there. Um, I just gave you a rundown of our budget with the numbers that actually were posted today from the auditor's office. So. Um. I do want to draw your attention to um. And it answers one of your questions, Commissioner Anderson, on uh, were the uh. The two city invoices sent out. I thought I had sent them out in twenty twenty three. Um, but apparently I hadn't, so I have got them sent out and one of them has been paid. We have not received any payment from Goldendale. And all of the quarterly invoices had been sent out for quarter one of this year. And Benjen and White Salmon have both paid all of their due. Nothing yet from Goldendale. They're working on it and quarter two invoices will go out this afternoon. So that answers your question about. Had I invoiced the.
So do we usually invoice quarterly or is it yearly?
Um, I had been invoicing yearly, um, but I've switched back to quarterly for your notes and Jen's notes, so.
Okay.
Um. And then uh, I'm also billing Goldendale for their medical. So. Uh, so on the supplemental. Um, we had another sergeant um, decide during this quarter that he was retiring. So. Um, we're going to add in his, because he is also qualified for the payout of all of his sick leave. Which is something we could not. Which is something we could not add into the budget forecasting. Um because we were unaware of his decision until. Um this quarter. Um so we will have that those numbers, but. The LNI for the Corrections Deputy um. The person was a casual who then moved to Corrections Deputy, correct Carmen?
I believe so. I I. He, I'm not sure why this happened. So he was actually hired as a casual in twenty seventeen and he went to a full-time in twenty seventeen. So I'm not sure why. What changed from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen?
But.
But there was discrepancy in his LNI rate.
His LNI rate didn't go up to the correct rate in twenty nineteen. And Jen found the error and resulting in twenty thousand due by the department. And almost two thousand dollars due by the employee for a mistake he did not make.
So it was underpaid dollars going to LNI.
Right. And so the employee will be asked to pay the two thousand according to the auditor's office. And um.
Wow.
We will be, so yeah, huge hit for something he didn't not do. Um.
Wow. That doesn't seem right or fair.
Exactly.
Absolutely, it does not seem right or fair. It was not his doing and um. For it to go on from twenty nineteen till now, I, you know, I'm not gonna pass the buck on anybody because. Stuff happens, but I don't think he should be held responsible for that payment. I think that um.
I guess I would question, what if they were no longer our employee anymore? Would we what, go after them civilly? To, I mean.
Right.
I I guess I'm gonna make a recommendation to the board that we. Um if the board is willing, that we get a better update on this and call the auditor in. And ask legal counsel what our choices are to see whether we can cover our mistake. Um or if we are not legally allowed to cover our mistake. Um that's my recommendation to this board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a hand in the back.
Gotta come to a microphone.
You got, you'll have to come forward, Casey. I'm sorry. It's the microphone thing. The public record. Thank you.
So he was originally hired as a control board operator in twenty sixteen and transferred to a corrections officer. Within six months, I think.
It was twenty seventeen because it was the year they got married. Twenty sixteen, he worked for buildings and grounds or somebody.
Yeah.
He went from one, one, one spot to another. Um but he did. All that did his time in the sheriff's office with.
I don't think that matters. Yeah, so so from the control board operator to the corrections officer, it was like a six-month period. It was very short. But when he went to the corrections officer, the LNI code was not changed in the system. And that was my mistake in HR. And so he stayed as the corrections officer. And then went to the corporal. And so from that moment, he was not paying the correct LNI code and the county was not. And so it was just found a couple of weeks ago during the budget process.
So it was, it was a mistake that we made, but it was. Uh money that was due to the state from him throughout that time. That so he received the benefit of the additional monies over that time.
Because the, the wrong rate.
Giving, trying to, the county cover it now would likely be a gift to public funds. That's what I, was my concern and I'm sure it was Commissioner Christopher's as well there.
Uh well, I'm just looking for a uh legal opinion of that.
This is Heather Joby. May I say something?
Yes, please. Thank you, Heather.
At at this point, we believe that uh the employees portion is um would be considered a gifting of public funds. I am working on writing up a PA opinion request so that we can get confirmation of that. We're also researching um how many quarters we can amend with the Department of Labor and Industries. And whether or not that impacts um our requirement to remit to the state and what budgetary impact that has on. Um the sheriff's budget. I did explain all of this to the sheriff's office that we haven't finalized. Numbers or anything yet, but I wanted to give them the heads up so that we didn't get hit with a surprise. Um when it was too late to do anything about it.
Yeah, thank you for looking into that, Heather. I think that answers our questions.
For now, I'm looking for more information.
Just let us know when you get your answers back.
I will do that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Casey. So yes, this is just the heads up uh that it may come up. Probably next quarter supplemental depending on it, but I didn't want you guys to get caught off guard. Thank you. Um I'm also gonna request, uh we have funds in our marine and investigative funds. Um I budgeted low for expenses and we've had some new expenses, i.e. Uh repairing the boat. And so I'm just gonna increase uh with our existing funds, our ability to spend them. Um so that request will come through the supplemental processes.
We'll see that come forward.
Yeah, okay. Um and then. Moving on to the next page, uh sex offenders, we've had an increase in our sex offenders, but we've also had some go to jail. And many, many more um. Is is.
It stopped.
Maybe it was my Fitbit saying I need to move more. Anyway, um we're watching our level three sex offenders who are homeless. Uh we're watching them quite carefully. Um and we have two sex offenders in jail still, so. Uh this is just sort of how we flow on those. Um. We have received two applications for range timber deputies and they're in the background process right now, so we'll see how that goes. Um posse member uh Dewey has been volunteering last year and he's volunteering again this year. To take care of the tasks that are needed for range timber in the absence of a deputy. Uh cameras are great. Profi is amazingly awesome as always. And then um our marine program, I have not plugged in our actual hours and number of. Um in uh inspections. Um I, that's something that I need to sit down with Deputy Wells about and we go through the hall call logs and. Match everything, so um but I do want to point out that. One of the scouts during the Glenwood rodeo went to, wore his life, wore the life jacket we have. And went up to all the kids in the grandstand, asking them what they wear in water and talking about water safety. Um so this one scout, that's been his, what we've uh had him do recently. And he was having a great time too. Um. Then.
Probably wearing it for warmth because it was kinda cold.
Oh, it was cold. He, he was not complaining at all about Glenwood rodeo, wearing that life jacket. Uh he would have complained this last weekend though if we had had him wear it. Um so yes, the posse uh was again present at Glenwood rodeo. They uh helped with the ticket gate and parking and traffic control. Um and then uh. Let's see, I already talked about our scout. Uh Community Days is the final thing I want to say anything about. It was a wonderful event. Um I got to participate in the dunk tank as well and.
Oh, I missed it. I'm sorry. I meant to come over.
It's okay, twelve other pe- twelve, twelve times I found that water uh to be very refreshing.
Only the first one that sucks.
It was. The first one was, and somebody had paid the twenty dollars for a just-go punch.
Somebody did that on me too.
And.
Actually a couple.
Yeah, and and so that was, I didn't even get the rep. It was just right in that water. But uh it was a good fundraiser for the count uh county and. Um I'll be happy to do it again next year. Um.
We thank you. Little, little kids that want a splash pad here, thank you.
Oh, yeah. No, so uh anyway, that's the world of the civil. Um any questions?
Yeah. Dog shelter. We, I thought we were gonna get an update back in April and still haven't heard anything.
Well, I'm handing that over to Danielle Olson. She will be communicating with you on it because they had us revise. The um diagram, so Rick Milleran after uh about a month ago gave me the. New uh quote for how much it's gonna cost to build it. And so Danielle will be taking this on now.
Thank you for the update.
I have nothing. All right. Thank you for your time.
I, I have a question, sorry. Um and I guess it's just uh me trying to make sure I'm not being impolite. Um when you give your updates and you go through your list, when I have a question on the item you're on. Would you prefer that I ask the question then or wait until you get all the way to the end and then go backpack?
I like the dialogue of while we're talking about that item to talk about it.
I do too. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't like stomping on your toes.
Go either way.
Okay.
So, thank you so much.
Carmen, will you be available during the lunch hour? Yeah. Okay. I don't usually take lunch, so yeah.
Lunches are.
Have a chat with you.
Yeah, come to the jail door, not the, you know, the back.
There you go, you can take him for lunch in the jail.
Yeah, no, um the back part, um when you come up by the jail entrance rather than the front.
Yeah, or I can come over here. It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Whatever you.
Yeah.
Sure, come on over. Okay.
Okay, we just locked the front, the front office at noon, so.
Oh, okay.
We have. We, we weren't putting you in jail.
Thanks.
None of you.
Thank you. Great. Yes, we are. Mr. Ben Cleve, no?
Um, Madam Pierre?
Yes.
Um may I, I understand staff is waiting, but since you have jail update here, there might be people on Zoom that are, won't be clicking on until eleven fifteen. It was not, most people didn't know we were, yeah, that's.
Thank you.
I would, yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So a number of things to talk about today. Um. I keep hearing and reading that potentially um there's some confusion about whether. You've made a decision to assume supervision of the jail and it's my understanding through two resolutions. That hand question has been answered. The only remaining question is when, not if. So I'm working under that direction. So if I've made a mistake. Um then, but it's my understanding. That we're moving towards that. That decision's been made. And I'd like to address Carmen's comment about communications. Can we do a better job? Sure. But I'll remind the Commissioners, we're in active negotiations on this entire process. Which includes impact bargaining over transitioning the jail from one elected official to the Commissioners. I keep the union and the union team informed all the way. Uh last week I met with the union rep and and we've agreed to reconvene the, the bargaining teams. So we can update everybody. Would we have, would I have normally went to the jail staff and informed them about the resolution to create a Department of Corrections? No. I wouldn't have. And there's a fine line in there about what I can and cannot communicate with them. So we're here every Tuesday. Send the paper every week. Um so uh I'm not sure how much we can do better than communicating than that. But we'll find a way. We'll try. But I think meeting, reconvening the bargaining teams to get caught up on everything and the next steps. Uh can help that process.
Can I ask a question? Do they have the ability to communicate with the union people?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused.
Since we're tied up.
I guess I'm confused how the corrections officers wouldn't know what's going on.
That's what I'm asking.
But uh we're just part of that communication. We're not all, we're not all of the communication, but I'll commit to do what I can to make it.
Well, we have some blocks where the union probably doesn't.
Right.
Yeah.
So um.
Okay.
We'll, we'll do, we'll try and do a better job, but it's not solely up to us to do that. And in some cases, we can't do that, but we'll. We'll find a way to see if we can.
Right, I, I guess I only ask um for our sake so that we can't be accused of not being transparent. That when we actually have a jail transition update, that it's actually posted on Thursday so people can pay attention. If they look at the agenda that came out on Thursday, I'm informed that this wasn't on here, so they might not even be paying attention today. So if. And I've brought this up multiple times. Anytime we have a jail update, it should be on our agenda. So people know when and exactly what time that we're doing.
And I think that's why that's there now. Correct?
And we will be sure to update the online agenda with the approved agenda. So that anyone who wants to go back and view it on the record on the video can see it.
So speaking of that, we have two resolutions. The last one you approved created the Department of Corrections. The next resolution I've been working on for a couple of weeks, it's the final resolution. It will cover all of the remaining issues. Of transferring the oversight of the jail to the Commissioners. The only thing it won't have is the date, but it'll be ready to go. Um so um when, should be done in about a week or two. So then that'll be on hold and all we need to do is plug in a date. But that'll be a comprehensive resolution covering assets, budget. Work charts, staffing, all of that. All of those issues will be included, are included in that resolution. Uh the consultant, uh we continue to look for a interim or consultant or interim um. Person, whatever the title is, to help us through the process. Um. I'm not hopeful we're gonna find anybody, but we continue to look and get the word out. Uh we've got some help from um the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. We've got some help from Proffman at no cost. Um I've talked to people on both sides of the river trying to get the word out, but I think where, where I would like to go. Ask you permission to go is I think we need to start to search for the permanent jail administrator. We have an existing position. We've called it the Chief Jail Deputy. Two thousand thirteen, it went through our classification process. It was in our pay scale, then it went to a formula based. Um that the sheriff's office uses. So it's a flat salary now. That salary fits into our uh grade seventy-six. We looked at the averages throughout the state. Um the, um the average for, for the state, for all the counties, for the jail administrator. Uh would also fall in that, in that pay grade range. And so um I have updated the job description. It's a current job description for somebody overseeing a jail. Um changed the title from Chief Jail Deputy to Jail Administrator, which seems to be the most common, the most common uh term. Uh there's a lot of different ones, but for someone running a Department of Corrections under the Commissioners, I think that, that's appropriate. The one thing that I'm working on today is our job description. Uh requires law enforcement experience, requires supervision experience, does not mention. Uh detention or jail experience. All the ones I looked at from the other counties required all three. And I think if we wanna find somebody that has experience in working in a corrections facility or detention facility. We need to include it in the job description. So I would, I'm probably gonna add five years of uh. We have currently ten years of law enforcement. That's consistent across many counties. Five years of supervisor experience, that's consistent across counties. Uh most of them. Uh require five years of corrections or detention experience, some a little bit more, so. I think I'll plug in five years and then um so, or a combination. So you may get somebody that's got. Uh more of one and less of the other, but not to ask for any background in corrections, I think is a mistake. So um I would um, so I propose we move it to pay grade seventy-six. Remember, the position's been under the sheriff. This will be a director. This person will be completely responsible for sixteen plus employees. A one-point-eight million dollar budget that's probably gonna go up. Um we know the risk. And liability associated with operating a uh a jail. And so this person will. We know the risk and liability associated with operating a jail. And so this person will. Be responsible for all of that. So I think pay grade seventy six is appropriate. I would recommend we use Prothman. I mean, you're creating a new department that's close to two million dollars. I think we should expend appropriate effort to find a qualified. Person to operate the jail. And so Prothman would be around seventy five hundred dollars. That's typically what it's been in the past. Would also work with the, the Association of Sheriffs and Police Chief. I have the money in my budget to do this now, but I would need a supplemental in August to cover this because we didn't budget seventy five hundred dollars. To cover this. But I think it's going to take six to eight weeks to do this and normally a search for a director. We post it for three or four weeks. Then we scan, we go through the, establish the interviews, schedule the interviews, interview, make an offer. You're looking at six, seven, eight weeks. So I think we should start that process now because if we delay it. For whatever reason, then we know we got six to eight weeks from that point forward. In this time, we'll be looking for a jail administrator. We're still working with Jose. Brions on, on the operations review. Carmen has been very helpful to help get information together for. For that process. I appreciate that very much. And so we continue to do all the other things that you've asked us to do. The final resolution will address the budget issue, but the finance committee has talked about establishing a department number and all of the. The mechanics that'll go along with actually creating a new budget. And we'll be doing that in four weeks. Submitting a budget for this new department effective January first. So all these pieces are going on. But I think having somebody to run the jail. Under the supervision of the commissioners is a big piece. I think we should get started. And I think you mentioned that at the last meeting, Commissioner, that.
I've mentioned it for two months, so I'm hoping there's a second vote today.
So I think, so I'd like to start that. And then we have all the pieces moving forward.
So are you looking for a verbal right now?
Yes.
With the changes that you mentioned?
Yes. And then to engage it with the contract with the Prothman and they'll have to go through legal review and the signature approval by the commissioners, of course. But if I can get that started today, then it'll move all that forward.
And you don't think we'll get many applicants without Prothman?
You know, I don't know. I don't know where else to go. We. Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, when Sonia Prothman, to her credit. Sent the word out to some folks she thought might be interested in the part time or the interim. We were. Sonia and I were contacted by somebody from the association about a potential surge. So I think they worked together. So I think. To me, it's a force multiplier. I mean, you're creating a two million dollar department to spend seventy five hundred dollars to make sure. We, we find someone that you want to run it is worth the investment.
And I would agree, seventy five hundred dollars. To make sure we're reaching all corners of the world to potentially hire. A great administrator instead of just a good one. Legal liability going forward is way cheaper than seventy five hundred dollars. So I, I, you know, I, I'm sorry, I would expect no expense. To make sure we get applicants that are the best of the best and not just a handful. Money well spent, in my opinion.
Did you mean legal liability is way more expensive?
It, well, legal liability, if you just get an average person because the good people didn't know it existed. I, I, yeah. I mean, this is not. A position that, like our other director positions, very few of our director positions have. The legal scrutiny or the potential liability that this one is going to have. So I would, most definitely, I've been pushing that they must have some kind of corrections experience because all respect to road. If they've never worked in a jail, they don't know what they're doing. Just like a corrections guy doesn't know what he's doing on a road. So, yeah, I do want some jail experience and I want everybody, not just in this state, but any state. That might be qualified and might be entertaining the idea to apply and not just a handful of people that we've reached out to somehow. Seventy five hundred bucks is, Trump change, budget dust, as some would refer.
And as I mentioned earlier, thank you, Commissioners. I mentioned earlier, you know, we, we did do a review of twenty twenty three data, which is all we have at this point. For what these, this position is paid for at all other counties. And our grade seventy six puts us, I think, in a very competitive salary. So typically, when we go to Prothman, we're kind of. Either at the low end of the pay spectrum or it's extremely difficult position to find. I think that's not necessarily the case here, so hopefully.
So are you asking for verbal for one through three or what?
I like to do one through five, grade seventy six, one through five. I can do one through three and come back if, if you want. I think the thing I'd like to get, yes, one through five. And then we'll post it, permission to post it, to engage with Prothman, go through the process. To get that contract approved and in place and any other folks that I can reach out to, to do that. So yes, verbal to do that. The contract with Prothman will come back to you on a consent agenda. So you'll prove that then. And then to make the changes to the job description, which, when we do the final resolution and we submit an org chart. It'll have this position with this title as part of that new department. Adding five years corrections experience and changing into jail administrator. So verbal to make those, all of those changes.
You, you have my verbal to make all of those changes.
I appreciate that. So hopefully I've made things a little clearer. I, I, I will work with Carmen and the union, Bob, of course, the sheriff. To make sure we're communicating appropriately and the best we can.
Well, and that's the thing. I don't know that, I don't want to put blame anywhere because I don't know, but. Anywhere we can help facilitate for anybody else's lack of. Communication, if the union's not being very communicative, if we can, if we can, you know, loop somebody in that then loop somebody else in. However, we could manage would, would help itself and. And mental.
And I'm not blaming you.
Future employees.
And I'm not blaming you by any means.
Right, either mine.
The multi-legged stool, we just all need to, and I think getting us in the same room again is going to help. Kind of bring it all to the same page and what's going to happen next and that kind of thing. So, so again, I hope I provided a little clarification. That I keep hearing the if, and the if has been answered. It's not just when and all pieces of this are moving forward.
Due diligence.
Yeah, so.
I appreciate it.
Questions?
No, sir. Thank you for your work. Thank you.
Casey, don't leave. I just want to say one thing. Thank you for coming up on that. And I want to say. You've taken on that on your shoulders. And I'd like, in my mind, I'd like to dispel that just a little bit. That was a lot of years. That's a lot of years ago and a lot of transitions in employees and managers and everybody. Where this was just bubbling around in our system and it wasn't caught. And. Don't let that. Burden you. Because I appreciate you and everything you do. And that, that's a small, super glitch.
I, I would, I would second that. I mean, mistakes happen. None of us are perfect. It, it, and so I hope you don't take it anywhere as an attack on you or it has nothing to do with that. I was just looking at ways of trying to make a wrong that we made. I said we. And, and make it right so that nobody has to be potentially harmed by it. But yeah, I'd move on. You're doing a great job. Keep plugging away and. Shit happens, so.
Don't be hard on yourself.
I have no miscellaneous report other than just a reminder that the bridge will be closed. Seven P M. To seven A M. For the next two weeks and.
Oh, thank you. You got us.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve pay estimate number four for the Fairground Sail Barn project in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand two. Twenty nine dollars and forty five cents.
I will second that because I forgot it, too.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Steph. Yep.
I always, that was just a, just a reminder. The information I have is, is we were hoping that it'd get done a lot sooner, but with the amount of lead paint that has to be. Taken off, that it's, it's time consuming. So. They are trying to, if, if it does move faster, they'll try to open it on the weekends or keep it. Keep it open later on the weekends to help some of the businesses out, but right now that doesn't look like it's the case. Yeah.
Only update I can say is, yeah, demolition derby went well until it got hot. One more idea that was floating through my mind about fairground improvements was. Where the bleachers come out, and I'm trying to think cheap here. Where the bleachers come out, they obviously don't come out far enough to actually block shade come about heat of the day. One o'clock. That it would be nice to think of some way, and I'm thinking old Roman gladiator arenas. That you can have a couple of poles underneath there. With something like a sailcloth or shower curtain with rings on each side that you can run it like a flagpole and extend the sailcloth. And then tuck them underneath like a flagpole, all winter, so you don't have to remove them or anything. Something going forward to provide more shade there.
Tried to have a tarp in this county. I've tried.
In the summer, when they're needed. I'm sorry, you don't have to worry about wind.
But you do.
You don't in the summer when they're needed.
Deck down sometimes.
But if, right, but if they're on a police system, they're drawn in and they're not flopping around in the wind on a windy day. Or they can be extended or contracted in literally five seconds. They don't have to be put up, taken down. There, there's ways. If there's actually a want to do it. And I think there's an obvious need to do it. I mean, how we got away with not having covered Beer Garden for the last fifty years is. Absolutely astounding, other than the fact that there hasn't been a want to do it. There's more, well, it's covering the bleachers. You can't get it easy up to cover bleachers. Anyway, so that, other than that, that, that went really well and was, was fun and well attended. Community Days. What, I mean, it went well, but it was.
Did you go in the drink?
Lots. It was not as well attended, and I think that was the heat, but even the parade, I was. There was far less kids in the parade, standing on the side of the parade. So, and then once that got over, they. They had vendors south of the courthouse lawn. They had food north of the courthouse lawn. They had car show clear over here, and then we had dunk tank way over there. So it was. Not critiquing in any way. But between everything so spread out and the heat, I think people walked around for half an hour and disappeared. And part of that is a complete lack of shade anywhere. Except for the dunk tank. I had an umbrella. But that's just it. Well, that was part of the thing. So when, when we put the dunk tank over there, the person in my group that was doing the dunk tank. Because I couldn't do it. It was originally my plan. They thought it was going to be car show, the whole length of the road, which is why they moved vendors over here. Well, then apparently there was something with the Golden Dale Motorsports Association in the chamber. So the Motorsports Association didn't participate. Meaning less cars, meaning more that, that there's, it's, it's Golden Dale. So that turns into get out of my sandbox a little bit. Anyway, so yes, we were down by the general store. There was nothing down there but us. So a lot of people didn't know about it and, but it still went really well. We raised almost a thousand bucks there. Law enforcement sat in, fire sat in. Billy sat in. It, it was, it was fun. It was, there wasn't a lot of walk by. Most of the people that showed up, showed up because they knew so and so was in the tank and they were going after him. I may or may not have had at least one individual in this room come twice. To both shifts that I was sitting in the dunk tank. Luckily, the first time he couldn't throw to hit the broadside of a barn. In the second time, they let him use the little kid's line. So his left-handed throwing technique, we know, you know, lefties are a problem. Actually hit the mark. And then there was other people in the room that cheated and paid twenty bucks. To just flat dunk me. They, they, yeah, well, we need to have an executive on disciplinary action to public employees here coming soon. No, it was all in good fun and I hope everybody had a good time and, and realized it was for a good cause. So I want to thank everybody who. Either volunteered to be in the tank, volunteered to help with the tank, or volunteered their cash to throw balls for the kids. And so thank you.
Were you done with updates? I just had, yesterday I went on an incredible tour out at Republic Services. I've been trying to get there. I'm so impressed. You need to go. Anybody that hasn't gone needs to arrange a tour when they're having one and go on it. It's just so much bigger. Than what I ever thought. Very organized. All the workers are, they all need to be thanked for the jobs they're doing out there. Hard, hard jobs, hot and miserable out there. And it's just an incredible facility. They're doing a good, good job. And then we also got to tour the gas facility and that was very interesting, very technical, way beyond me, but pretty impressive. What they're doing with them.
I'm, I'm glad you were able to go. I was not able to do that tour, so. I told them to reach out and hope that you can, you can do it. Thurston County, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was with Thurston County. Got to meet Thurston County Commissioners. I'd already met their solid waste.
So it's, you, you'll, you'll learn all the technicals the more you go and the, the lining thickness and the whole sales pitch.
It's pretty impressive.
So that you can help facilitate that sales pitch. But yeah, no, it's, once you go and you've. You've seen a million landfills in your life. You go there and you're like, is this really a landfill? I mean, there's this tiny little open face.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's, it's quite remarkable.
Don't go on a hot day.
It's, you were probably in an, you were probably in an air-conditioned car for most.
We got out.
Did you?
Where, oh.
But no, it's, I'm, I'm glad you were able to make that.
It's good. Learned a lot.
Yeah. And you'll, every time you go, you'll learn something.
Nope, they're doing a great job. And I look forward to seeing our Thurston County Commissioners more. It's always good to make those relationships.
And you didn't see the, or hear that there were any toxins in any of the wells?
No. And in fact, we learned a lot about how they manage all of that. And how many times they're inspected and who has oversight and they're really concerned about it.
Well, I would.
Do a good job.
Clarification. I heard it was toxins in the wells, but I'm kind of wondering. I'm unaware of any wells at the landfill. I'm unaware of any wells. I know there's drainage ponds.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm curious if the individual that said toxins in the wells was actually talking about drainage ponds. Or leaf ponds.
Misconstrued them for something.
Yeah, so there's, there's, yeah, I don't know what's going on there, but just for clarification, I don't believe there's any wells. At the landfill.
Well, there's a lot of wells. They're, they're called gas wells.
So there you go. They're not, they're not water wells. They're pipes in the ground to collect methane.
The way it's constructed and the way with the geology that they constructed it, to have it. Ever, ever get down to where it might get into an aquifer would be near impossible.
Well, and that's the educational part. If you, if you look at it, they're required to have whatever fifteen feet of clay and just naturally, it's like eighty.
Yeah.
Or some crazy number. And then they don't have to have a lining and they still put a lining.
Yeah, they do.
Best lining money can buy. So even if the lining wasn't there, it would never make it through the natural clay. So.
With salt under there.
And then, yeah, so you're absolutely right with the absolute perfect. Natural location to, this is not leaking down into somebody's water well. So just for clarification.
Glad we got that clarified. I don't have.
Well, I don't think we really got that clarified, but we're, we're all on the same page now.
Okay. I'm good.
I, I don't even, Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we adjourn the meeting for the day. Noting that there will be no workshops scheduled for July eleventh.
I will second the motion and make it crystal clear that we are done for the day and will not be returning after lunch.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
No, I feel weird going home at eleven thirty or getting out of this room at eleven thirty anyway. I won't be going home, but.
It's okay. I have a list, so that's what I'll go do now. We'll be out of public session and go to work.
Yeah, I got some phone calls to make, so that works.
That's right. Thank you. And you have a meeting, so thank you very much. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I. Thank you. Motion passes.